Everyone can hear us. Ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I hereby call the Monday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four Cumberland Town Council Meeting to Order. A few orders, I guess, housekeeping items here. We had a workshop with a company called Flash Vote at six o'clock tonight. It has a kind of software, interesting software solution that would allow the town to send out various surveys and things to residents to get a better understanding of where they they fall on various issues. So that was from six until six thirty, and then we just had a quick finance committee meeting with some folks from Bradbury Way who are looking to potentially have that that portion of their road accepted as a town road or some other type of option there. And so that brings us to seven o'clock, which is our ordinary meeting time. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from our, if you can believe it, December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, if anyone can remember back that far, so. If there's any questions.
Some of.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second on those minutes. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor?
I'm not.
Okay. We have, let's see, six in favor and one abstention.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep. Okay, the next item on the agenda is manager's report, so I will turn it over to Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we are graced with the presence of three young men, and they are Sam Ananhea, Max and Sean Allen. And Sean is going to kick it off and kind of tell you why they're here. And I just want to say they're three awesome young men. So, Sean, kick it off.
Hello, everyone. Just want to say thank you for having us come back this year. It's an honor. Once again, we're here to talk about Backpacks for a Change, our nonprofit organization, organization giving back to others in our community through the town hall. This year, we raised eight thousand dollars at our small fundraiser gathering where we hosted around eighty people, and we had live music and we had very generous donations with a lot with a silent auction and other open donation boxes for others to freely donate. We have a thousand more dollars to, we have a check for a thousand dollars more to donate to the town hall for gas, gas to help heat homes, and we're hoping to get that in here pretty soon. We also have some extra money that we're keeping just throughout the winter to 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 hold in case of any special requests from any others who need warm clothes, more heating, or any other needs that they might have. This year, I was very grateful for the help of these two behind me, Max, my brother, and a good friend of mine, Sam Ananhea, and they helped a ton with this fundraiser this year, setting it up, preparing, getting everything ready. And I couldn't couldn't have done it without them, to be honest. And I'm glad to introduce them in hopes that they'll take it on next year for for good as I'm graduating this year as a senior at Greeley High School. And I'm excited to see what they'll do with it, and just wanted them to introduce themselves real quickly and and maybe say a few things.
I'm Max, Sean's brother. We were really stoked this year with how much we raised. We didn't expect as much, especially with a smaller venue. It was quite fun to see everyone and be there, and we're excited for the years to come.
Max, what'd you do with the money? Because you guys haven't mentioned that quite yet, because I think we really need to stress that. Or is or is that another person's part?
Well, no, we gave, how much did we give? We gave seven thousand in fuel cards to the town.
To the food pantry. They provided fifty-dollar gift cards to the Irving Station for gas for the folks that use the food pantry, and we were able to give all of them out at Christmas. So you guys are rock stars to me.
Wow.
So, well done, man. Well done.
Thank you.
I'm Sam, and I joined last year, and I was able to help out. And I'm really excited to take over. I think it's just great to give back to the community, so.
That's great. Yeah. First off, it's amazing having you back. I remember very well when you came last year and what what you guys were able to do, and so that's just amazing. You guys have both grown as well. I've noticed Max is a little taller over the mic this time, which is really, really great. I don't know if anyone's got some immediate comments.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What are you studying in college? Hopefully, public policy or something along that line.
I have not decided yet. I'm still trying to figure out what I might do.
There's a shortage of town managers around the country.
Well, I'll think about it.
Run, just run.
Yeah, and can you maybe just give us a little background of what inspired this to begin with?
So, back in our, back in like the start of COVID, my freshman, going into my freshman year, so the summer before that, my friend and I were at our first job ever, and and we were making money working at a small job for my dad, and and we were in the warehouse talking about like what what are some things like people are struggling with currently in the world, and we were like, COVID's really doing an impact on a lot of people, and and we're thinking about the, like, what ways could we help? Because we were both very fortunate people and very lucky with our situations, and and we thought about like giving back school supplies, so hence the name Backpacks for a Change. We were like, we're gonna, we're gonna start a nonprofit, and through the help of my mother, who originally had run a nonprofit organization through her job. I've helped there before, and and since the company is no longer available. But I helped her and I worked with her through that. So I kind of, before that, before those years of high school, I had originally had a I was familiar with the nonprofit and giving back, and I was excited to like start our own. And we were like, we're gonna give school supplies to kids in in backpacks, and and we're gonna get them, probably give them to anyone who needed them in our community. And and we ended up, I like, ended up doing fuel cards because Mr. Shane said that would be, that would be a huge impact, especially with families struggling to heat their homes in the winter of COVID. So we, we, we've been doing this for four years now. And I'm excited for these two to join in, and and yeah, yeah.
That's really great. Any other questions? I I did have one other follow-up. Where was the event that you, you said it was a smaller venue? And also, did any of you play in the band for the live, live music that was there?
We did not this year. We were unfortunate not to have Charlie play this year because he was here last year, but he had other things going on tonight, so. None of us played, unfortunately, but we just had it at our, at our house, and we, it was like an inside-outside kind of thing, so we heated it, we heated our, we had heaters outside for anyone who was outside. That's where we had our silent auction gear and stuff. And then everything inside, we had some appetizers for everyone and kind of just hung out inside.
That's really great. Please.
I was just curious, what were some of the items that you did for silent auction?
We, we were very generous to have a couple of donations from family, friends, and other, others in our community. We had a, like a car cargo box that goes on top where you can put like skis and stuff like that in it. We had some homemade like food baskets from family members. We had a few gift cards to restaurants from others in our community who were very generous to give a couple, actually. And we had a blank, a designer quilt who, who's one of our family members genuinely generously donated to us, and and just like some small things. But they're, they're like, they had some good, they were, they're quality objects, I'd say.
Yeah, please.
Just real quickly, I was looking around the room and seeing how many different volunteers are here in the room, volunteer for things within our community, and a lot of us are older and, you know, we've, we've had a nice career and we want to give back to our community. You guys make us so damn proud up here that you have made this community better at at your young age, and and we are thankful. We, I just can't appreciate you guys enough, though. Thank you very much.
We're glad we're able to help, and and we enjoy it, and we, we really do love helping others, so thank you for that.
Yeah, well, great job, and I think to echo Mike's point, it gives a lot of hope for the future, so well done. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you all have a good night.
So now Jen Doten, our town clerk, has a report for you. Tough act to beat, Jen, but good luck. And guys, thanks again so much. I can't tell you how many families you helped this year and how excited they were to see those gas cards, and all your help in the past has been just unbelievable. Thank you.
I can't follow that. My news is not as exciting possibly, but probably interesting. So, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Jen Doten, town clerk. And we just, I wanted to go over the March election and the process of what's happening because the state of Maine is going to a semi-open primary for the presidential primary in March and the primary that will be held in June. So the changes that are going to happen are that people that are unenrolled will be able to choose one party ballot to vote, and there will be a Democratic ballot and a Republican ballot for this March election. So unenrolled people can choose at the time which one they'd like to vote. The rest of the rules stay the same. If you are in a party, a Democrat or a Republican, then you're going to get that party ballot. Anybody that is in some of the other parties, they didn't have a party ballot, so they won't vote. People that want to change parties, those rules are staying the same. If I no longer choose to be in the party I'm in, I can unenroll or go to a different party. That puts me in a status of a fifteen-day waiting period before I'm eligible to vote. So fifteen days prior to Election Day, if somebody wants to change their party or become unenrolled, they're going to want to do that to be eligible to vote on Election Day. And once, the only other thing I can think of that comes to mind is that if I were to go from a party to another party, the fifteen days still is in play. But once I'm in that other party after that fifteen days, I have to stay in the party I chose to go to for ninety days before I can make a change again. And I think that pretty much covers the semi-open primary part of it.
Yeah, I have a couple. Go ahead.
Jen, you've got two elections coming up. You've got March third. What is, what is on the ballot for March third?
March fifth.
March fifth, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Like, if I'm having an election on March third, I'm probably going to walk away quietly. March fifth is a presidential primary election. That's the only thing that's going to be on the ballots or ballots for. They are also probably going to be ranked choice voting from looking at what's going to be who, how many people candidates are on the ballots. When there's three or more candidates on a ballot, it kicks it to ranked choice voting.
And what is on the June election?
That will be all your other elected officials.
County officials.
What's that?
A lot of county officials.
Yeah, yeah, so June, let's see, I was going to highlight it, and I didn't, so here. State representatives, senate districts, county offices, probate, judge of probate, register of probate, county treasurer, register of deeds, your sheriff. I think that was it. District attorney and county commissioner. So those will be your June ones.
Do we have any, anything for specific to the town of Cumberland on the June ballot?
In June, you'll have your school budget validation. You'll have your election of your officers for school and town council. I feel like there's one more, but it's not coming to mind.
So I guess the point I'm getting at is, wouldn't it make more sense to have one ballot for the town that included the Drown Road, this project over here instead of? If we go March fifth, you're going to have to have a separate town ballot, correct?
Right, you would have a separate town ballot.
And why wouldn't we want it all on one ballot in June, everything? So what I'm, isn't it easier to have one ballot? Basically, you guys are going to have to process two different ballots.
In June, we'll have the primary ballots, which are probably just two. We'll have the school budget validation ballot, which is on its own ballot, and then your municipal officers, which is on its own ballot. Would it be easy enough or easier to add it to June? Probably just as easy, because then now we're only doing the one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure.
How many parties do we have besides Democrats and Republicans? And I just want to clarify that if they are in another party, including the one the Secretary of State just accepted as an official party, they can only vote if they switch to Democrat, Republican, or unenrolled. Is that what you said?
Correct.
And how many are there? I mean, how many other parties are there? Because this is important for people who might be in the Green Party. I know that's one.
Yeah, there's a Green Independent Party, there's a Libertarian Party, and there's a No Labels Party.
No Labels.
That sounds like this is one that disqualified.
So if you are in one of those parties, in order to vote in the primary on March fifth, you have to either unenroll or join the Democrats or the Republicans, and you have to do that at least fifteen days ahead of time.
Fifteen days prior to, yep.
Is it business days or?
That's pretty important for people to know.
It's just, it doesn't specify business days. I think it's just always been fifteen days.
Counselor Bill.
So the key word is unenrolled. Unenrolled people are the only ones who can vote or request a ballot from another party or from a party.
The, the point of the semi-open is for the unenrolled to be able to.
Okay. My, my, my question, and I knew the answer to that, how does this affect absentee voting?
It shouldn't affect it a lot. I know, I think Brenda sent you the absentee ballot applications so you could see a sample of what we're going to have to deal with as far as people that are unenrolled, and they have to choose a party as opposed to people that are enrolled. We'll be able to identify it on the absentee ballot. When I talked to the state the other day, I called just to get some clarification myself on this. My understanding from them was the same rules would apply for absentee ballot, that if somebody is in a party, they want an absentee ballot, but they also want to maybe change their party, there's a fifteen-day waiting period for that. So as long as they do that before Election Day, they'll be able to get their ballot and vote it and return it before eight P M. I do encourage people, though, to not do this on Election Day if this is where they think they're headed. Election Day, as we all know, tends to be very busy, very, I don't know, cramped a little when we get people that are trying to change voter registration and trying to check in just to vote. So if people are thinking they want to, they should call or stop in and talk to us about it. People that have also changed their name or done their address changes, if they haven't done those with us, they should stop in and see us and try and get that done before Election Day so they can focus on just getting their ballot and voting.
So, so Jen, if if I wanted to be unenrolled and I showed up on Election Day and I'm in a party, I would just exclude myself from any voting, wouldn't I? Because there's a fifteen-day waiting period once you change parties, so.
Exactly.
Be careful not to try to play games with this because it's, it'll, it'll bite you.
It will post those dates, yeah.
And I think we've been trying to go through every crazy scenario that might occur. And the biggest one that Jen has shared with me is that the people that want to change, change now and then change back, they have to watch when they change back because I don't think we have ninety days before the June primary, so.
So they wouldn't change back, correct? So if if you go from a party to a party, they're going to stay in that party for ninety days. But part of that is, the, the part about voting, including voting, is the fifteen days prior to. So the fifteen days lead time to the election, they'll want to make sure that they're changing prior to that because once they submit that change, we have to accept it, and then it puts them in a holding status for fifteen days, so.
And we can't give them a ballot. We can't give them a ballot at that point.
No.
So to to clarify that a little bit even further, you've got effectively a hundred and five days, counting the fifteen day before Election Day and then ninety-day lock that you would be required to be in that party. So when you're, if if you're thinking about this, this is something that you got to be very careful with.
Yeah, what the fifteen-day period has been in in my history, it was explained to me once, is it's kind of the cooling-off period. So people that maybe were in one party and said, no, I'm going to go to this party because I'm mad at my party, and then they'd be like, no, I want to go back to my party. It gives the fifteen days that voter the opportunity to say, oh, you know what? I really didn't mean it. I want to stay in the party I'm in, without being penalized and having to stay in a party for ninety days. They have fifteen days to secure that that's really the choice that you want to have.
And if they decided to switch back, they'd have another fifteen-day waiting period. After ninety days.
Oh, after ninety, if they switch, if the fifteen days goes by.
They'd have another fifteen days to wait, right?
No, not my understanding. The fifteen days is that's their only opportunity to say midway through, I don't want to change parties. I'm going to stay where I started. And that ninety-day clock does not start. The ninety-day clock starts at the fifteen day, after, at day fifteen, when they're actually enrolled. If you weren't confused before, you aren't.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update. Like, did someone have a question here? It looks like. Sure, please, if you want to step up to the mic.
Don't move by, Jen.
Oh, okay.
I think you can answer my question. I'm hoping so. Thank you very much. Terry Maloney-Kelly. So my question is more relative to absentee voters because when was the last time we had a town referendum that was in March? And this time of year, we all know, at least a couple hands or one hand of folks that are away. So my first question is, if you are out of state and you wanted to change parties, what is your timeframe having to rely on the process, or is it electronic for folks? And then my second question is, if you are an absentee voter and want to try to vote in March, which, you know, some folks may want to, what is, what are they looking at for a timeline to be able to do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to remember both of those. One is, it is not electronic. They can obtain a voter registration card from the state website. Make sure they fill it out completely and submit it to us through the mail or the Dropbox. If they're away, they could just mail it to us. Not the best option, but that's the option that's available right now for any changes. And then the absentee ballot part is absentee ballot applications become available ninety days prior to an election. So we've had absentee ballot applications in office since close to the end of December. So those are ongoing. People can apply at any time. They can apply for an absentee online through the state website. There is an online absentee application. They go in and fill it out. If there are people that are traveling overseas, then people want to make sure that they choose that online application process for overseas voters. They're called YOCAVA voters, Uniformed Overseas Servicemen Citizens something. I can't remember what it all stands for. So those are the options. Does that kind of answer your questions?
And March of two thousand and twenty was the last time we had a president.
Oh, yeah, I had my, thank you. It's so good to see. So, yeah, March of two thousand and twenty, but we did not have a referendum. And I think March of two thousand and twenty was also the first primary election that we've had.
I had a question. If I vote in the primary election in a particular party, and I don't like what, what the outcomes are, and I decide to become unenrolled, do I get to vote again in June? And and how do I, do I become an unenrolled voter at, like, let's say my candidate doesn't get picked, right? And I say, I've had enough. And the next day, I come to town hall and I unenroll. Do I get to vote in June for Senate, for House, for those?
Yes. So what happens if, I'm understanding you, is you've been in a party, you go to elections, you vote your ballot, you're like, I'm done with them, oops, done with them. I'm going to be unenrolled. Once you become unenrolled, in June, it's the same semi-open. So as an unenrolled, you could still choose either party ballot.
Okay. I think there might be some of those.
It usually happens, either right before or right after.
I just heard a gasp from my colleague over here, which usually means he has a thought or a question.
I just had to think that through. I was thinking, June is the primary, November is the general.
Correct.
At that time, doesn't matter whether you're enrolled or a party player, you get a ballot that.
And you hope somebody you like landed on the ballot, correct?
Well, thank you so much for that update. I don't know if there's any other questions, but you clearly do not have a uncomplicated job, so thank you for being here and keeping us in line.
You're welcome. And feel free, if you think of something, just reach out to me.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The one last thing is not as complicated. Winter Family Fun Day will be held at Valhalla on February third from one to six P M. Now that we have snow, Winter Family Fun Day is back on, and we're looking at fire pits, smores, games, skiing, sledding, and much more. Pete and the group down here at the end of the building, which I affectionately call Fun Town, they are amazing. They're going to put a great day together, and I hope many families can attend. Pete and his team are doing a great job getting that ready for us, and that'll be February third. At, it's a Saturday at Valhalla from one to six P M. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Okay, we now move to public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who has comments or questions or concerns under public discussion that do not relate to an agenda item that we're discussing? Okay, please.
Bruce Sherwin Blanchard wrote, I'm trying to help the town of Cumberland too in a different way than some people do. So in my efforts to try to help, I have a couple of questions here tonight. Number one is, I've asked this question four or five times now. Once, once to Mr. Shane in person in a meeting with Shirley, Shirley, once with Mr. Sigrist in a meeting with Shirley, and two or three times by email, and I have not gotten an answer. So I'm kind of going public that I want to get an answer here because I'm frustrated trying to get one. The question is, Ocean View has come up in this housing question in, in some ways. It is my understanding on the town website, under aging, under active lifestyle now it is, under their mission, there's a sheet there that principally still calls it aging in place. It refers to the land that Ocean View is on as being set aside in two thousand and seventeen for affordable housing. Now, that Ocean View, if you haven't checked, the last I checked was a couple of months ago, their two-bedroom cottages are eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, far from affordable. So I'm just wondering how that changed from affordable to Ocean View being on it. And I'm not expecting an answer here tonight because it's going to be complicated. I just want to see where the votes are and how that happened for, to our town, for our town. Because in my opinion, that would be a better place for the affordable housing. That second question is, got to look at my notes, sorry. The Westbrook Development Corporation, I don't, are they a nonprofit? Does anybody know?
I believe they are, yeah.
Not-for-profit?
Yeah.
Will that affect the TIF payment from them? Because typically, not-for-profits petition for pilot payments, not pay the normal load of property taxes. Or I don't know about TIF taxes. That's what I'm asking. Is there, you have an answer for that, somebody?
That, that is correct.
Yeah.
What's correct?
That it's a payment in lieu of taxes with a nonprofit. We haven't seen their final financing plan yet. If, if it comes from main state housing and they don't have any other outside sources, it would be eligible for a, a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, and that will, that is generally lower than going rate.
Same thing we have at the senior housing at.
Yeah, and that, that one pays twenty-five thousand dollars, which is barely one and a half students at Greeley.
Yeah, they don't have many students at Drown Road Apartments.
Doesn't matter. We, I don't either, and I'm paying taxes, Bill.
Yeah, and Ocean View is a senior housing overlay. It was not an affordable housing district. A senior housing overlay is defined in our ordinance, and they followed those rules.
They, that, the affordable housing set aside, that would be considered following that, that set aside. They, that, uh, the affordable housing set aside, that would be considered following that, that set aside? I don't know.
It was never discussed as an affordable housing. It was discussed as a senior only, a senior housing overlay.
Well, you can, folks, anybody can look at the town website and look at the aging, um, active lifestyle 55. Look at the mission on their, on their first page, there's a little thing, mission down below. And you can find it on page 12 of that document, what it says. And I, and I'm not really fighting. I'm just wondering how it happened, that's all. And I think it's too bad. It did happen because that would make a nice, nice place. We've got problems with this location that we're using, with roads and stuff. The other thing is, and that's a not-for-profit, you gave me that answer. Um, the, the council and, uh, has not addressed with us, I've brought it up many times. Other people have brought it up, uh, many times. Way back in March, Tim Mahalik brought this up. Um, how, how is this affordable housing, uh, being done with TIF going to affect property taxes? We would like to know that. Maybe we don't need to worry about it, but I'm worried about it. So that's it. I don't expect an answer in this right here. It, that's complicated. So somebody's got an answer. How do they affect top property taxes? Do our property taxes go up or don't they because of it?
So you, you're correct. It is a very complicated topic. And I, I don't know if in the next minute and 10 seconds, we're going to be able to, to address that. But it is something that we are looking at. It is something that we are analyzing. It is something that we will go into great detail on as part of our three community meetings that we have hopefully coming up.
That's what I was.
Absolutely.
That's what I was hoping.
What you're hitting on are, are the key core issues that we're also focusing.
While we're talking about the meetings, will somebody like me be able to talk it, uh, present? Will we, people that are opposed to this affordable housing, will they be able to present their case at that meeting?
Absolutely.
Can we bring, uh, boards with pros and cons of it?
I, I would love that and welcome it, yeah.
Yeah, big, I mean, a big boy would put on an easel.
I, I think that is absolutely appropriate.
I don't think, I don't think the councils looked at it that way well enough. I've heard no discussion of pros and cons from any council member. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Bruce, really quick, what was the page you said you were referencing? Bruce, page 12?
Yeah, you referenced a page. Was that page 12 on a?
12 and 13. 12, 12 is not marked. 13 is. You have to go to the, over to the left there.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, you look, find 13 and go to the left is page 12, not marked. Okay?
Yeah.
Document, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone else, uh, from the public that would like to address the topic that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close public discussion and we will move directly into legislation and policy. The first item on the agenda is 24 dash zero zero one, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on scheduling an advisory referendum on the proposal for an affordable housing project on Drown Road from Westbrook Development Corporation. Mr. Manager, if you could just bring up that timeline, that would be helpful. But before opening this agenda up for public comment, I wanted to take an opportunity to provide the public with a brief overview of the various steps that the town council has taken relating to this topic and to highlight the very much appreciated hard work that has been put in by so many in, in our community to help get us to where we are today. As you can see, or hopefully see from the timeline that's up on the screen, for the last several years, members of the town council, the town staff, and countless hardworking volunteers have been made aware of and have been carefully considering the issue of affordable housing in our community. And while the timeline goes only back five years, the issue of affordable housing in Cumberland is certainly not a new topic and is one that has been discussed for decades. For instance, in the town of Cumberland's 2014 comprehensive plan, it states that the town should seek to quote, "Make available quality affordable housing for people of all ages and income levels," end quote. Furthermore, the 2014 comprehensive, uh, community survey, which accompanied and helped drive much of the recommendations in the 2014 comprehensive plan, also found that 73% of polled residents supported town policies that would encourage affordable housing for elderly households and that a majority support policies that would encourage the development of affordable housing for young families. If you fast forward almost a decade later, the town of Cumberland conducted yet another community survey in 2022 in which more than 5,000 residents participated and 58% of respondents supported some form of affordable housing in Cumberland, including 63% supporting affordable housing for young families and 76 supporting affordable housing for seniors. This history and the corresponding responses to various community surveys not only shows that the issue of affordable housing in our community has been around for a long time, but also that a majority of polled residents appear to be in favor of the town of Cumberland doing something to address this issue. So in terms of a little background here, on July 26th, 2022, the town of Cumberland, uh, the town council formed an affordable housing task force. Some of the members are here this evening, made up of 10 community volunteers to study the issue of affordable housing in our community and to provide recommendations to the town council on how best to utilize the various legal and financing tools available to better diversify Cumberland's housing stock and to potentially add additional affordable rental housing units in our town. The task force issued its final report to the town council on January 23rd of 2023. Based on this report, the council then engaged LDS Consulting Group LLC, a housing-based market research firm, to perform an independent supply and demand analysis of Cumberland's current housing market and to determine the demand for affordable housing in our community and to highlight what types of affordable housing options might make sense. The consultant issued her report to the town council on Jan-, on July 7th, 2023, which stated that there was, quote, "An immediate need for additional affordable rental housing," end quote, and also recommended the various types of housing that would best meet this need. A month and a half later, on August 24th, 2023, the town council held a public workshop with the housing consultant to provide an opportunity for counselors to ask any follow-up questions they had and to better understand the findings of the report. The following week, on August 28th, 2023, the town council voted to move forward and issue, and issue a request for proposals to various affordable housing developers in the area for an affordable housing project to be constructed on the town-owned property on Drown Road. Responses to the RFP were due on or before November 2nd, 2023. While the RFP was issued to several affordable housing developers, only one, Westbrook Development Corporation, a local nonprofit, responded to the town's RFP. In its response, Westbrook Development Corporation proposed constructing three separate buildings on Drown Road made up of 71 single-bedroom units with 36 being reserved for seniors, 21 two-bedroom units, and 15 three-bedroom units for a total of 107 affordable housing units for house, for households earning less than 60% of the area median income. The town council then had several follow-up meetings with Westbrook Development Corporation to better understand the RFP response and to answer any follow-up questions counselors may have had. Finally, just last month, on December 11th, 2023, the town council voted to authorize the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Westbrook Development Corporation for the purpose of pursuing the proposed affordable housing project on Drown Road and to set a public hearing date for today, January 8th, 2024, to consider scheduling an advisory referendum for the project to be held on March 5th. All of this leads us to today. All of us on the town council feel strongly that given the underlying importance of this project, the ultimate decision as to whether or not to move forward should rest with the voters. And each of us on the council have vowed to respect and follow the voters' decision, whatever that may be. It should also be noted that since receiving the RFP response from Westbrook Development Corporation, the town manager and his staff have been working diligently to conduct a detailed impact study to determine what, if any, the potential costs might be to Cumberland taxpayers should such a project move forward. These costs and the manager's initial assessment are included in the current council packet this evening and will be considered in greater detail as part of the three upcoming community meetings we have planned for January 18th, February 1st, and February 29th at Valhalla. We encourage all members of the public to register and attend. With that, thank you to my colleagues on the town council, to the town staff, and to the countless volunteers, many of whom are in the room tonight, for your hard work over the past several years to get us to this point. I would now gladly welcome members from the public to come up to the podium and to provide any comments, questions, or concerns you may have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Denny Galladetta and I live at 67 Range Road. On behalf of my cousin, Elizabeth Sturdivant Drown, I speak in opposition to the project you are, you are considering today. In her 1980, 1891 will, Elizabeth gave the 105-acre town forest to the inhabitants of the town of Cumberland with two conditions. First, that the property shall not be sold. And second, that income from the property shall be expended for the cause of education and only that cause. This project clearly circumvents the intent of Elizabeth's will. The property will be leased for 99 years to an out-of-town developer at no cost. This is a sale for all practical purposes. Also, the resulting subsidy is not for the cause of education. Based on a legal opinion open to many questions, the town nevertheless asserts it can circumvent the will. I beg to differ. The Sturdivant family settled in this area over 300 years ago. Elizabeth was born in 1822, a year after the town itself was born. Her uncle, Captain Ephraim Sturdivant, was one of the town fathers and served as treasurer for many years. Her first cousin, Alifa the Greeley Jr., made in 1858 the founding gift to establish Greeley Institute, now the high school. Elizabeth shared her cousin's passions for education and made it the focus of her gift in 1891. The town accepted the gift at the turn of the century after the passing of Elizabeth's husband, Joseph Drown. It was a good match from the beginning. The town reports of those years had a line item for the Elizabeth Drown legacy and dutifully recorded the income from the sale of the farm crops such as hay as fire, hay and firewood. In 1928, Cumberland became the seventh main town to adopt a town forest, noting that, quote, "The schoolchildren of today should be taught the importance of conserving the trees." By mid-century, the town built the Drown Road School on this property, consolidating the numerous one-room schoolhouses. Little Lee Fields came next, enhancing the physical education curriculum. The town forest even today has a strong educational component with programs like Nature Trail and Story Walk. The Lands and Conservation Commission has identified over 70 species of trees, shrubs, and native flowers. These markers are to educate youngsters who have not had the opportunity to learn about native plants because of urbanization. By its action, the town has thus supported the education intent of Elizabeth's will for over 120 years to the present day. It needs to continue to keep its promise. In addition to circumventing Elizabeth's will, the project conflicts with the Climate Action Plan, recently approved by the town council. The cap calls for increasing, reducing, increasing, not reducing, conserve land, which this project will do. The cap also, also calls for the preservation of prime farmland to support local agriculture. 95% of the project is on farmland designated as prime or statewide perform, uh, importance. High-value farmland owned by the town is quite limited in supply. The project would cover this prime farmland with parking lots, roads, and large buildings. In sum, I would ask that you reject this proposal before you primarily because of its location within the town forest, created by Elizabeth Drown's legacy, my cousin. It is ill-considered, hastily assembled, and to my family, a great disappointment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment?
Uh, Bruce Sherwin Blanchard Road, uh, once again, I'm troubled by the process. This should have been on the agenda. You would have had this room. You would have had standing room only. This is not the way to do it, to sneak something this controversial. Sneak's not the right word, but I'm sorry about that. But to bring up something this controversial and this divisive in the country without giving everybody a chance to talk about it. And as far as having time up there on this, there's not enough people here to limit us to five mil- minutes on this stuff. Most people won't go over it anyway, but, um, as far as that time goes, March 27th, Allison Foster, then the chairman, let some people go seven, eight, and nine. One person was at the podium for 15 minutes during public discussion. Watch the video. Last, November 27th, Tig was, uh, here, was running the meeting. She let a person go eight minutes here during public discussion. Mr. Seagrist, you've cut me off twice in regular discuss, I mean, once in, in, uh, public discussion. And sorry, but I'm feeling a little picked on here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Gensenius. I live at 44 Laurel Lane. As you know, Elizabeth, uh, Drown, in her will, offered the town of Cumberland a 100-acre parcel of land. And I want to stress the word offered. Uh, that offer came with conditions, though. The intent of the offer was that the land benefit the school system. The two conditions, as Denny mentioned earlier, were that the property never be sold and that the income from the property be given to the school system. The property would, um, uh, the town had the option of accepting those conditions. And if not, the property would be divided among her descendants. The town chose to accept the property and the conditions under which the offer was given. In 1957, a judge ruled that Elizabeth, Elizabeth Drown's will did not constitute a trust and further ruled that the conditions set forth in the will no longer applied. Basically, the judge ruled that the town now owned the property and they could do whatever they wanted to do with the property. To me, there's a difference between what the town can do with the property and what the town should do with the property. While the will, when, um, uh, while the will, when it took, or, I'm sorry. While the will was not a trust, the town did agree to the conditions set forth in that will when it took, uh, possession of the property. So regardless of the judge's ruling on what the town can do, to me, the town has a moral obligation to honor the intent of Elizabeth, uh, Drown's will and the conditions under which the town took possession of the property. I hope you agree with me and I hope you will reconsider moving forward on the proposed project. Instead, I would suggest that the town consider putting the property with its current features and structures in a conservation easement that is in accordance with the conditions under which the town accepted the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rick Downe for Catalpa Lane. Um, a few points on this as you deliberate. Uh, there was conversation in the meetings in November about, there, there was pushback from the public about the 110-unit design that was, uh, put out. There was, the several members of the council said that, uh, they heard that and that they would look at a reduced scale to the project. And we're now here with 107 units. Was there any effort to back down the number of units in the course of the discussions with Westbrook Development?
This is the, uh, proposal they put forward.
But did we ask to go with a, or at least look at options of a smaller level?
We asked that 30, that a portion of the units be at least, uh, dedicated for senior housing.
Okay, I'm not trying to be confrontational because I think some version of this project is probably not a bad idea. But I think it's really disappointing and one could even drift towards disingenuous. If you said you would hear that feedback and you haven't made some effort to see if there are alternative designs.
The, the original design, Rick, was, uh, over four stories at 50 feet in height. One story was knocked off. All of those, uh, uh, when that proposal was sent out after that meeting.
I, I do agree, Bill, that that's an improvement. But at the same time, when you look at traffic, when you look at impact on the school system and various other topics, the sheer number of bodies is, is relevant. The next point I was hoping to touch on is, I see the income limits, uh, for the applicants. I don't see anything that requires, and I don't know if I would, that there actually be, um, people that have income. So is, is there a, um, has anybody considered if Westbrook, which serves a, a multi-layered population, is going to use its waiting list, which I read in the news and gather to be considerable, to bring in individuals that may be, um, you know, starting heat, new lives here in Maine or in some fashion, uh, you know, not have income streams? And if there, if that is the case, then I think your analysis might consider impact on general assistance and related. on general assistance and related topics as well as the schools. So I, I'm not sure how that works. But moving on from that, my final observation would be, I've been, both in the Housing Committee, had in comments to you guys in the past, expressing concern about where this started, which was to take care of our own here in Cumberland. Got me called a nativist and various things during the Committee, the Affordable Housing Committee, which I actually am proud to wear that label if that's what it is. But I, I'm curious if there is any criteria in this project that gives any kind of favorable treatment to Cumberland residents or people who work in town.
Yeah, well, first off, I was in all those meetings, and I never heard that term.
I can remind you of that.
Yeah, I apologize if that's what someone called you in that meeting. That's not appropriate, but thank you for your service on the committee. I do know that there are concerns about the legal ramifications of trying to say a particular project, because it's tied to federal funding, is for Cumberland residents only. I think there's a concern about violating the Fair Housing Act. That said, I think there are often ways that communities can creatively and lawfully market and ensure that local residents are made aware of these projects, probably before others outside the, outside the town.
Yeah, I, we obviously talked about that, Mark, and I, I get it. Again, I'm not opposed to some version of this, but I think if you believe that Westbrook Development is a, is a sort of an area-wide organization, and you believe that they have a waiting list of hundreds of people, which is, again, what the news coverage has said, giving our people a specific awareness of an opening of a, you know, a new project, it seems unlikely to bump people from an existing waitlist if there is no requirement that they do so and if it might even contravene their funding sources. So I just, I'm really, I would not favor 107 families, of which 100 are not currently associated with the town of Cumberland, and I think we have to be transparent about what we actually can assume and perhaps even guarantee or not guarantee. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Oh, I wanted to respond a little bit there, Rick. I think that all of us share that concern about making sure that there's a benefit to this community, without a doubt. I think that the, personally, I want to hear from the residents in the broader context in the three workshop meetings that we're going to have, because I think there is some room for some modifications. That being said, we do have a proposal, and we're engaged in that proposal in good faith, but I think if we had, you know, overwhelming support for 90 units or something like that, it's not going to fall on deaf ears. I think that there's a, an interest in the council, hearing from the public, there's an interest in the council from hearing what the tax implications may be or may not be. There's, there's a number of things that are, are in flux, I guess, where to put it, you know, what are the costs, you know? And at some point, you say, all right, I can stomach that or I can't stomach that. And I think, you know, it's not to say that I'm going into this thing with blinders on, but I do want to be fully educated before we start modifying the proposal.
No, I appreciate that, Bob, and for what it's worth, I've tried to stay current on this. It feels like there is a proposal, and we're voting for the proposal or not. The idea that there remains room for negotiation of any issues of substance is not clear to me from the materials. So if there, if there is room for negotiation, that certainly is good to know. Thank you.
Mark?
Yes, please.
Rick, Ted, just a couple of things, and you brought up some really good points. As you probably remember, back this summer, one of my big objections were, we were not, the council was not involved with the RFP putting this out. We asked a couple of times, can we get the council together before meetings to talk about what to send out to the developer? That wasn't allowed. It was never scheduled. There was no meeting allowed. We asked repeatedly to be involved with the RFP and that the council meet together to put out, not the manager, the manager works for us, and that was denied. As far as giving preference, the only, the only list we have in town, which shows a real need, is senior housing. And I, you know, I heard from the beginning, we want Cumberland residents to get the first preference. We met with the developer, said can't do it legally. So yes, they're going to advertise the very first time, keep that in mind, the first time, advertise locally, get some interest. After that, there's a waiting list, and they've got to go by the waiting list. And if that waiting list is, nine out of 100 people on the waiting list is from out of town, that's the way, that's the way that list has to go. So the first time, you know, they're going to focus, but they can't do it legally. You know, the projects we own down here, we can, we can favor that to Cumberland residents because we own it. But when you get a federally subsidized housing with all the, you know, coming from the mission monies and so on, it is not going, we can't focus it on Cumberland residents, unfortunately. You know, this, this project is Section 8 qualified, keep that in mind. We just found that out the last meeting we had with the developer. I asked him, is this going to qualify for Section 8? Yes, it will qualify for the Section 8 vouchers. So there's a, there's a lot more, we promised a lot of things, or it was brought up a lot of different ideas, and most of them have not panned out, unfortunately.
Just to put it out there, the core of our recommendation from the Affordable Housing Committee was a revitalized local housing authority with some different mandates and some staffing and the rest. And that was intended, in my judgment at least in part, to at least explore these types of issues of favoring Cumberland residents. And we also talked about the fact that certain funding mechanisms would probably prohibit the ability to manage that and that that might cause them to be less desirable than other outcomes. So that's all in the report for anybody who wants to revisit it.
Thanks, Richard.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else from the public?
I want to respond to a couple of things.
Mr. Sherwin, we have Terry first, and then you can come on up.
Terry Maloney Kelly. So thank you, Mr. Vale. This is the first light that I have seen for openness to about all the conversation that you have heard from the townsfolk since June. If we're going to go into these meetings that you're going to have, and that, correct me, and maybe it was just a different use of words, Mr. Chairman, but I thought I heard you say that your, our town manager gave you financial information tonight in which, if you come to the public meetings, you can find out about it. So you use similar words, but my thing is, is there, is there, is there information out there right now that the public should know about?
It should be in the, well, it's in our council packets, I can say. That's what I meant. So we get a council packet every Thursday as to what these issues are going to be on the next Monday, but it should be publicly available on the town's website, I believe.
When?
Now, it's, it's up there right now.
Okay.
What's the name of it?
Right. So regardless, I honestly came here tonight to congratulate you folks for realizing that this should not be your decision and to thank you for taking this to referendum. However, I think March is ridiculous. There's a time, I know that a lot of our folks in this community have no idea about all the other things coming down the pike financially, aside from the school. So folks like myself, who have to make those financial decisions because we have limits, need to know the full picture, and that's another disappointment through this process that I have found, the lack of transparency as a body, to let folks know what really is happening in our community, because we do have things that are going to affect our tax rate. Also, I would like to say that we've never had really, I mean, we've had one vote in March. I'm thinking, I don't, how do, I don't, how can I put my signs out if the ground's frozen? And I've never had to do that before. We've never had March, number one. Number two, we have a lot of folks in this community, and we all know it, who are not around. Number three, the process of getting an absentee ballot is difficult. Number four, if you're going to make amendments, like you're thinking maybe, or maybe it was just you, Mr. Vale, how are those people ever going to vote on something that they know what they're voting on? So thank you for taking this to referendum. I think you knew to go to June so that the citizens of this town have a better financial picture, including maybe we'll have an idea about the school, about our future looks like here in Cumberland in the next one to five years, because it will be ugly. We already know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherwin, did you have a rebuttal?
Number one, Bruce Sherwin Blanchard Road again. Mr. Eads, I don't think the general public knows about the Section 8 part of this thing that you talked about. I didn't. As far as the rents go for people, the Section 8 is a big difference. That is a big help to people that, I don't think these great rent rates are that affordable to begin with. I've written you an email about them. I don't think that, but a Section 8 would change that. Now, my question would be, is that Section 8 for all apartments or is it limited? No, just several?
It's Section 8 qualified.
Section 8 qualified?
In other words, people, if they get a Section 8 voucher.
If they qualify.
If they get, no, if they get a Section 8 voucher, they can use it to pay the rent.
Okay, yep, all right, good. Well, that's, that is a big difference. I'm still opposed to the project in general because of the location and the tax situation. The other thing that I have thought of, but keep forgetting to bring up is, and what he said reminded me of it, that I have seen no one come to this meeting, to any affordable housing meetings, to say, I want this because I'm going to be there. I want this for me and my friends. Nobody's done that. I don't even think I got the ideas, because that's, one of the Portland meetings on their affordable housing talked about how the vast majority of speakers were people that wanted to use it.
Thank you.
I'll be honest, just a comment. If I were in a situation, and I've had my own fair share of situations, I don't think I'd be coming to a public meeting about it, just my own personal opinion.
Well, again, there are people that do do that.
I totally respect that. I just, being candid, I've had my fair share of situations, and I probably wouldn't come, I'm not someone to ask for help.
Yeah.
So I think it.
Let's understand, I didn't say everybody would, but nobody has. Some, some might. Portland says that's who the majority of the people were.
Totally.
Anyone else from the public have a comment?
Are we continuing this discussion or are we setting a date for, because I just am, you know, I have a different opinion than some other people.
Yep, I had, I had planned on having public discussion and then closing public discussion and moving to council deliberation, so then we could speak a little bit more on it. Yes, please, sir.
Ken Lehman over on Tacoma Lane. I do have a question. When I read advisory referendum, I was unclear whether that was merely to advise you, but I gather from the statements up there, it is a referendum, yea or nay, by which the Town Council will abide, and I appreciate that. I'm mindful that March is going to be an interesting election day. There, if there is only one Democratic candidate running for president, there's going to be a very, very low turnout for Democrats. I'm not trying to figure out which way people are going to vote on this issue, but I would think that's not a very prudent day on which to hold an important referendum of this sort, and I would think you ought to consider the likely turnout and the skewed turnout that you're going to get.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
I have a question. I didn't know we opened up that, I thought we.
If you could step to the microphone, that would be good.
I'm coming to the microphone.
Give you a.
Once again, I get confused with procedures, because I didn't know that we had opened up, I thought we were talking about something before we opened that up. I didn't know we were, had already moved to the vote, because I've got a couple of things to say about that, that I've been holding, waiting for it to open. Is that open now?
I'm not really sure what you mean by open. We're having public discussion on the first item on legislation and policy, which is to consider an act on setting a referendum date for March.
Maybe I missed it. I didn't hear you say that. I heard you say, say, before we get to that, you're going to talk about this timeline that you had on, on affordable housing. So, so now I have a couple of comments on, on the election, and I, that was one of my points, is what the gentleman just brought up. Very poor day to do it with, with a, really a given on the Democratic side. There's nobody opposing him. And let me look at my notes. I, I think, and I read an email to you folks about this, that this should be on the same referendum as the school, so that people know that we're talking about two issues that are going to affect them greatly here. And that was my, other things have been brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we do have one additional.
I think the question I've struggled most with is why.
Please state your name and.
Sorry. Jana Spalding, Jana Lynn, for all of you, West Cumberland. And I think the question I've struggled most with is why do officials we elected to represent residents' voices and interests seem more concerned about theoretical future residents than current property owners who have desperately and passionately told them how much they're struggling, how scared they are they won't be able to afford to remain in their homes, and realize the futures that we've worked for? According to the U.S. Census, in 2022, the median Cumberland renter paid $1,554 in household expenses, total expenses. The median mortgage holder in Cumberland, that's mortgage, utilities, and our favorite taxes, $2,703. The homeowner fortunate enough to pay off their mortgages paid $1,103 monthly. That includes some, but certainly not all, of our longest-term members, our homeowners. The average social security check for those seniors, $1,666. The more of these meetings I've attended, the more evidence become that it's not about the people at all. It's about entries on a ledger. It's not about individuals or families who own homes on Skilling Road or Tinker Road, Tinker Lane, or those on Wyman Way or Old Musket Road. It's not about families or seniors or single-income house homeowners. It's only about contributions to the municipal coffers. If that wasn't evident before, the statement attached to this project, which I did read, makes that clear. There's no talk of moral imperatives to help those less fortunate, although I'm happy to hear about the Section 8 housing. No acknowledgement that the very real struggles of current residents or the impacts this will have on those most vulnerable in our town have even been heard. Any impact on taxes via impacts on the school district are dismissed as foolish and wrong with no explanation, just, we say adding 36 new students, that would be two classrooms, for just this one project, not counting any other project, will only have negligible impact on the annual budget or any need for a new school. Just trust us. We all know this one project does not exist in a vacuum. It's not just 36 kids. But if you can't attract a corporate tax base, build more and more and more housing. That's what we've always done. A 20% increase in new households decade over decade, every housing development is about tax dollars they'll generate, not the residents who will occupy them. For every private development pursued, million-dollar McMansions and tightly-packed multi-unit developments pay more tax dollars than modest homes on ample lots. This particular proposal, proposal would generate TIF funds, which the town manager says will be used for shiny new ballfields, emergency communication towers, paving the town hall parking lot, even extending the water line in West Cumberland so another developer can build another housing complex. That would be 72 houses, which according to the U.S. Census, would be about 55 more students. It has nothing to do with the people who will live in those households created or the people currently struggling to keep up with their household expenses because of the largest education mill rate in the state and the second-highest adjusted mill rate in the county. But it's not about money, or not just about money. It's about residents' lives and futures. It's about these people's lives and futures. At least it should be. There will be three council seats on the ballot in June, including unfortunate replacements for two retiring members who are two of the three counselors who have most consistently represented the interest of residents below the median income and not just developers and those above the median income. I hope some town residents willing to take up the retiring counselor's concern for all residents, including those currently paying an oppressive percentage of their income to keep up with spiraling household taxes and expenses, will consider running for those three seats. Who we select for those positions has never been more important, so that residents who are not among the burgeoning above median income fold. are not among the burgeoning above median income fold will continue to have a place and a voice in this community, and so this town will truly be economically diverse and welcoming.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that has a comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close a public discussion on this comment, on this topic, and we will move to council deliberation. So I will first start off with our counselors to see if there are any initial comments or questions. Please, Counselor Douglas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Always super helpful. One of the things that came up was, and I wanted to get some clarity on it, Bill, is there room for negotiation during the workshops, conversations surrounding any adjustments to the proposal prior to referendum, or has that door closed?
No, there are, there are, there are opportunities to talk about that during the process, and that's why we set up the next three meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
But there are not options to change the project? Because if it goes to referendum, you're voting on a particular item.
107 units, correct.
Correct. So that would be...
Right, well, at this point, there are things that I'm thinking about. For instance, there was talk about additional types of housing that could be incorporated into the plan for future development. For instance, transitional housing that we talked about, Syle's Housing, short-term housing rentals that the HOA could, the, sorry, the Housing Authority could oversee. Those are the types of things that are also on the table, though this developer would not do that. So this, you're right, the referendum vote tonight is for the 107 units.
Okay.
Do you have another question, Counselor?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Please.
Go ahead.
I want to talk about the, the date going from March to June, and I, I'm very interested in hearing what the other counselors have to say. When I asked the town clerk today, tonight about, we're going to, she's going to have to create and have, and count a ballot in March, and then another one in June, is it better financially for us just to do it in June? I, the last time I met with the developer, I asked him, is there a difference between when we do it in March or do it in June? He goes, no. I mean, this is, there's no rush on this project. So I'm just kind of interested, the rest, here from rescue, why March? Why not March? Or why June? Why not June? I'm going to what Terry said, we, we do have a lot of residents that are down someplace other than 16 inches of snow right now, and are we better off waiting for them to come back? So, anyways, I throw it out to my fellow counselors, what do you guys, what do you all think about the date?
So I, go ahead.
No, please. No, you already started.
I actually posed the question about the financial impact during our executive session about the election being in March, and there is no financial impact directly from that. And I also just, in my, from my purview, I feel like this has been going on for a really long time. I feel myself as a counselor very up to speed on what's going on. I'm feeling like, candidly, I'm not sure why this is now coming into question. I feel like there's been a lot of discussions about this as a council about the timeline, and now all of a sudden, it feels like three days before, we're all chatting about this again, it's now come up again for discussion. So I'm a little confused as to why now the narrative is that it's rushed.
I guess, I'm not saying it's rushed, I just, I want to know why, I'm interested, Billy, why not put it on when we have another referendum going on? Why, why would we not want it in June? We're going to have more people, we're going to have more interests, we're going to have more participation from everybody. Those for, those against, I, I...
It just feels like there's always going to be something, though, right? Like, in the summer, it will be because everybody's going to be away. And so it's like, this is where it lines up from a timing perspective, on how we've discussed the project, where we've landed, how we got here. Now we're here having this discussion, and now it feels like we want to push it out, but I'm not really sure why we want to push it out. It's in, it's in the, we have all three meetings scheduled in the next few weeks and months, and it, I'm just confused as to why now we want to look to June. It just feels like that's the timing of how this has progressed.
So I guess what, what I didn't hear in, in what you just said, Billy, is, I go back to my question. Why, what is the pros and cons of each date? And that's what I'm asking you, and you...
Yeah. Sorry, were you saying something?
No, no, I'm just...
No, I'm just interested in the pros and cons of, of the dates.
Did you have something on that?
I have something attached, but go ahead.
So just, I've heard a few things as to why this is. Number one, absentee ballots are always available. They're available 90 days before any election. You can get them online, it's very easy to get them. So the argument, to me, oh, please.
Can I just interject?
Yes, you may. I would love for you to interject on that.
Just about absentee ballots. Absentee ballot applications are available 90 days prior to...
Thank you.
And ballots are available 30 days prior to. But people can apply online, apply in person, or call the clerk's office. We have a lot of senior citizens that will call. It's just easier for them, they don't do computers, they can't get out, so they call us, and we verify that way. Sorry, just wanted to...
Okay. No, please, stay close, because we may need you again. I've also heard that just from a project standpoint, it's, this is actually in the council packet as well.
Financial impact.
The, the financial timing as to when developers need to apply for funding for projects. It strikes me as one where there's two funding rounds, and the developer is unsure whether financing would be available in 20, it could go away in 2025. So their goal is to apply for the fall 2024, so that's coming, just a few months from now, fall 2024 funding from MSHA, the main state housing authority. I've also heard from the developer that they are in a better position to apply for funding if they already have planning board approval, and they've kind of got their ducks in a row to be able to go and apply for that funding in 2024. There is also potentially a spring 2025 funding round, but it may not occur, right? That's the, that's the concern, until fall of 2025. So I think for the, from the developer's perspective, the faster that they can apply for that funding before it dries up potentially, the better. So that's one reason. Another reason is, we've talked about the school potentially having another referendum on a new project, maybe it's onsite, maybe it's back at 80 Gray Road. That would potentially be in June. We meet and speak regularly with folks from the school board, and it's been reasonably clear to us that it would be better to separate those, because they are large issues, right? Both of them are ish, large issues. I know that folks view them as inextricably intertwined. I don't necessarily view them that way, just given the fact that we don't know exactly the number of students. We can estimate what the number of students might be on a particular project, and this particular project is estimated to be about 36 students. But there is a lot of data in our town that could show that that could actually be less than that. And so if the superintendent and others on the school board are telling us that 36 kids over the course of a five- or six-year-long project to get something built will not have a significant impact on the school, then it doesn't strike me as something that we need to necessarily tie together on the same ballot. And so those are just a few issues that I, I wanted to raise. Looks like Counselor Story King's got some comments as well.
I do have some issues. I have some, I, I, like Terry and Jana, have some pushback on the narrative that this isn't going to cost the taxpayers anything, and I have a couple of questions to ask that might indicate where my thinking has been on that. And I think for that reason, they need to be, that, it feels like, feels like we're doing what the school board did when we tried to, when they tried to pass the Performing Arts Center before they built a new school, so they could get the Performing Arts Center. I don't want us to be perceived as passing an affordable housing item before we know what the school number's going to be. Okay? Here's where I'm challenging, some of the, some of my challenges or my thoughts. So I spent some time with the actual RFP, it's $11.5 million for the TIF, and I kind of went through it, and I'm trying still to be educated on this. Page 31 of the RFP says the Westbrook Development Corporation will require a credit enhancement agreement to make this project viable. What's your best guess on what that amount is going to be, and where in the TIF application does that come from? Because there are some very specific categories for that funding, and I didn't understand where that might come from.
I think they were comparing it to former projects that they had worked on, and my frustration or concern was that they didn't really convey what their intent was, which was to look at a payment in lieu of taxes. And that would be considerably less than what a credit enhancement agreement would be. A credit enhancement agreement would be set up if it were a for-profit and taxed, just like everything else is taxed in town. So that's why, it would have been a 75-25 request, that would be typical if it were a for-profit organization and a...
Then why did they ask for one?
I don't know. That's what I kind of asked as well, because that didn't make a lot of sense.
So we should know that.
And I just shared with you, it's going to be a payment in lieu of taxes.
So you've spoken with them, and that's what they...
Yes.
My other question concerns the Exhibit B in the TIF application, and it indicates that these nine acres and those 12 acres have an assessed value of $0.
Correct.
How is it that those 12 acres that are part of 31.67 acres assessed at $78,700 are worth nothing?
Only because we're, they're owned by the municipality. That's what they signed.
But I, okay, so I went, I thought that might be the answer. So I went and looked up municipality land, and I couldn't find any other municipality land that was valued at $0. For example, the town garage and the vacant land behind it, just the land, not the garage, just the land, and it's 13 and a half acres, is assessed at $405,000, yet the ball fields are worth nothing. That doesn't pa, that's what we're saying, that's what I'm hearing, that this doesn't quite pass the straight face test, that this is worth $0. And those 12 acres are worth $0.
So when you look at TIF districts, the first thing you look at is assessed value, original assessed value.
Right.
The original assessed value on those properties has been for a long time, no, no cost, because we don't tax them, they're tax-exempt as municipal ownership. So if we wanted to appraise them and sell them, that's different than the way we deal with, with them when they are in TIF districts.
So why are those, why are all the other towns, because if you go to MapGeo and you go up and you type in Town of Cumberland, every property is listed. Every property, I made a little chart, because I just took eight for examples, because I was trying to get the average price of what town-owned property. Twinbrook is assessed, and if you did the per-acre assessment of Twinbrooks, it's $4,000 an acre for Twinbrooks. We've assessed that. We don't pay taxes on that.
Those are assessor questions. I don't assign those property values to the properties. I'll get back to you, and I'll get an answer from the assessor.
Okay. Because that's, those, these are things that I think we need time for answers.
What does, what does that question have to do with it?
Yeah, that's what I was going to talk about.
Pardon me, louder.
What does the assessment of the value have to do with the...
It's part of the TIF application process, and it should be done correctly.
By the developer. By the town.
By the town.
By the town. It's part of Exhibit B in the TIF application.
And it was already approved by the Department of...
It was already been approved by the D E C D. And I also have an interesting question here, because if this is, if, if this is a TIF district, which it is, TIF District 8, isn't it more beneficial for us to actually have zero be the value?
Yes.
Because then whatever approved or appraisement that comes up, let's say 20, 30, 40 million dollars is built up on something, we've gone from zero to 40 million, which is actually a larger captured increment growth, which is beneficial to the town.
I understand that. My fiduciary question is, do we have the authority to be just giving away or reallocating town assets? Because property is an asset, and these properties have value.
Correct. And the answer is yes, we do, right? We do have the authority, we are the, the town council.
So, but that's not something that shows as a cost to the taxpayer. When we discuss, how much is this going to cost? And I'm not sure I'm explaining myself correctly, but when you give away town assets, you are, you don't get those back.
Right, but we're also gaining, we're gaining an asset.
You sold town assets in the past.
What's that?
You've sold town assets in the past.
I don't understand your point, the question.
You have sold town assets in the past.
Yes, yep.
Some of them...
But we're not selling them here.
Some of them we bought, some of them we bought back.
We're giving them away, and then reallocating 12 acres that we're not sure is the highest and best use for those 12 acres. You might hear from the conservation people, Lansing Conservation, that that's not the highest and best use for that farmland over there. You did hear that tonight. So these are all points that I don't, you know, at a meeting, and I, I'm going to try to be at all three of those meetings, but unless we make these other points of view public, it looks like everyone on the council is waving flags. Bob, you want it, you started us down this road because you wanted to take care of the people on the, that are on the waiting list, and I applaud you for that. But the people that have signed up for that have, are signing up for Cumberland Housing Authority units, one and two bedrooms with a garage that look like condo. They're not signing up for a building that if you went down on Route 1 and took three of those buildings and put them together, that's what those three units would look like. They'd look like nine of those units divided in three out here. That's what it's going to look like. That's not, those people aren't signing up for that. And in fact, the, the LDS report that people keep referring to, that we've referred to here, said on page 30, no, wrong, wrong paper, sorry, on page 12, quote, "There are not enough senior households in Cumberland to fill the affordable units at or below 80% of AMI." And then on page 13, "Regarding demand based on current households in Cumberland at this point in time, there does not appear to be enough low-income households in Cumberland to fill either a family rental or age-restricted rental housing unit. Instead, households would have to come from the greater study area." Which concerns me when I hear people say, "We're not taking care of our own people in town." These, this is inviting more people in. And Jana touched on this, and Jana, I went one step further. I went to the, to the, to the U.S. Census, and I was looking at monthly costs for homeownership. And with a mortgage, you were right, was $2,703, so, but I adjusted it 3.1% inflation, and we're at $2,787. To stay in your home with a mortgage, that's the median. And without a mortgage, it's $1,137 adjusted for inflation. And at 60% AMI rent for a one-bedroom, it's $1,332 per month. It's still cheaper to stay home than to move in and to pay all of your expenses and maybe have enough for a cleaning lady if you're a senior person, and stay in your, and stay in your home. So I guess, I just wondered, we've, we've, I don't know. I feel like I'm shoveling against a tide sometimes here, because there's such a push for this to happen when there's not an immediate demand. And I, I sat on the 2014 comprehensive plan. Bob Vale did too, and Pete Bingham, who's in the audience, they were the co-chairs of the 2014 comprehensive plan. It was not a big-ticket, huge discussion item. And when we, one of the, we talked mostly about sustainability, we talked about conserving land, we asked questions. When we asked the question about should the town acquire more open space, we added the, if it's not going to cost the taxpayers money. We didn't add that to, should the town develop policies that allow affordable housing if it doesn't cost the taxpayers money? We didn't ask that question that way. So those are just some of my concerns, and...
Counselor Wilson, please.
I spent some time today, after kind of being immersed in the RFP and really thinking about, or kind of having these dialogues about our town, I wanted to step back and kind of look at affordability as a national issue, because there's a lot of information out there, and it's really nerve-wracking, and I'm going to tell you some of the findings. out there, and it's really nerve-wracking, and I'm going to tell you some of the findings that knocked my socks off, slippers off. Okay, so nationally currently, there isn't one state in all of the United States where a minimum wage worker can afford a two-bedroom apartment. A worker earning the minimum wage would have to work a hundred and four hours per week to earn enough to pay for it, and that would be at the twenty-three dollars per hour minimum wage mains, currently, we just got a bump, is fourteen dollars and fifteen cents per hour is our minimum wage. I think Portland just went up to fifteen, was that what you heard wrong? So, so that's kind of what's going on nationally, right? Every state has a need for affordable housing. And then we think about L D two thousand and three, and we think about that legislation which was put together to increase density. And much of that is tied to this housing crisis, where there is a shortage of eighty-four thousand homes statewide, and we need to get to that by twenty-thirty. That's a lot of houses. We already have a severe homelessness problem. Dr. Norov Shah was back in the state a couple of weeks ago, talking about the expected influx to Maine of climate refugees, things we haven't started to see yet, but we expect that they will. And so, and I know that we're talking about the referendum tonight, and we've kind of, we've gone in a couple of different directions, and it feels like we're kind of going back to, you know, whether or not this is viable, and I think that we all are, believe that the voters are the individuals that should be making that decision. Yeah, I think that we're all in agreement about that, but for me, just, it's not just a Cumberland problem, there's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to go in all of the U.S., and I think that's a really important thing to think about. Where are people going to go, you know? And so I hear, and someone said at, you know, one point, you know, that we have done our part, but it, it seems like we've got to start somewhere, and for that reason, I think that, and also from kind of a community dialogue, and also a healing perspective, I do, in addition to the things that Mark mentioned about the finances for the developer, I think it's important, you know, there is a lot of information that we have, the tax information, I think Bill has done a really great job in our last meeting, and I would encourage any voters who didn't watch our last meeting to kind of revisit the presentation that he gave, explaining the TIF, explaining, you know, the offset income from Ocean View, or how that could possibly offset the cost of new students. But I do think that, you know, belaboring this process, there's also something to be said for community healing and community dialogue, and I would rather personally do that over a two-month period where we're having these dialogues, they're not six weeks apart, where, you know, we're forgetting what was said at one, and other things come up, let's come together as a community, talk about this, and then put it on the ballot and have an answer, and then move on, you know? If we do it, we do it, and if we don't do it, we don't do it, but do we want to be creating these, like, it's divisive, and it's, I think that we should have the dialogues and then know and then move on, whichever way that goes. Oh, sorry, I'm off the chair.
No, you're fine.
I only chose, I was just prepared to vote one way or the other tonight on when the referendum was, but with Mark's narrative at the beginning, before this item came up as an agenda, I felt like the public needs to know publicly on, well, it's not on TV anymore, so my mother can't watch it, but.
Why?
Why?
It's on Channel Two.
I went to Spectrum and there was no Channel Four.
Two.
Two, or Three, or Four, or no, it starts at Four. I'm going to have to check again, maybe that was just my TV, but, or her TV. But there's, how, other than social media, am I to get out my take on this? You know, which is, I think, a representative concern, a concern that I'm hearing from the people. I'm not worried about myself, per se, I have been hearing from people, and I have been invited by people to, to have conversations about this, because some of it doesn't feel like it passes a straight face test, and some of it doesn't feel genuine, and to a lot of people, it doesn't feel like it's helping them. And we look at our community, and you look at the twenty percent growth, we have twenty percent growth, thirty-five houses up on Route One Hundred. Moreover, on Route One, ninety-six apartments, all things we've done in the last decade, Yarmouth has had a seven percent growth in households, Falmouth, a fourteen percent growth in households. I agree with you, I think affordable housing is an issue, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying, we need to hear our citizens, which is why we're going to referendum, and we need to respect that.
I also think it's important, I'm hearing a lot of kind of sprinkling of concerns in terms of almost fear, fear-based concerns, of who's going to move in here, what's their income level, are they Section Eight or not? Are they from Cumberland, do they have any connection to Cumberland? I can't tell you how many neighbors and friends and people that I've talked to that have said, "I love living here, I've lived here my whole life, my son, I would love for him to move back here," or my daughter, I would love for them to move back here, but they can never afford to do it. My elderly mother, I would love to have her closer to us, but she can't afford to live here. So I think it's also important to think about, if there are other people at some point that come in and move into a unit like this, they might have a really strong connection with Cumberland, stronger than maybe me, or stronger than others on the council, or any folks in the room. So the idea that someone is from a different town, or might end up moving to Cumberland and calling Cumberland home, as being a scary thing, is something that I don't necessarily share, I don't share that concern.
I don't have that fear at all.
I don't also share the concern that maybe the developer might have a certain number of folks that are reserved for Section Eight vouchers, that's not a concern to me, that's on them to try to figure out how to financially make this project work, right? And so I think it's important to not think about what we're losing, quote-unquote losing, a, two ball fields that even the Little League is telling us are ripe for significant repair, if not major improvement, because we're down two fields already, because there's portables sitting on the fields that we used to use. So these things are, yes, they're connected, but this is an opportunity for us to kind of heal and fix, fix two things at the same time, potentially. And so I'm in favor of this, I also feel like if folks want to vote, they can vote, the information's available, they can, they can do that in March, they can do that in June, and I think there's going to be a significant turnout in March. So I'll leave it for any other counselors that have comments here.
I'll make a couple of comments. I've heard the comment to a lot of people, to a lot of people, of the residents of the Town of Cumberland, "We are going to put this in the hands of the residents of the Town of Cumberland. The residents in the Town of Cumberland will decide whether this will sink or sail, not the town council. It makes no difference to me whether it's voted on in March, or if it's voted on in June, there is some financial advantages if it's voted on in March." We're going to go back and forth here all night long, we know how the vote, I suspect how the vote's going to come out, let's not beat this to death. The Town of Cumberland is going to decide what happens, not this council.
Counselor Vale.
Thank you, Ronnie. I agree, I agree. And I'm looking forward to the three meetings, because I think that the input from the town, townspeople, is important as to how we move forward. To answer to Mike's question, I don't care whether we have it in March or June. If I was a, a logician there, or somebody, I might be inclined to go with the June vote if I wanted to make sure it passed. I think there's a, you know, Mr. Schoren points out that the Republicans are going to vote in March, by inference, that means that the vote would be defeated, we would lose, lose that. So I guess if you're, if you're, if you're playing that type of card game, you might say, well, let's, let's have it in June, let's not take the chance, it may fail, because we don't. And to kind of bait that horse a little bit further, you know, I support tying this with the school vote, because I think it's, it's an honest way to look at it, because I think that a lot of people here just come here. I recall, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here either, I served fifteen years on the school board, and I never saw anybody show up. And I watched the, every year, the cost of operations increase, 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 and that's not going to change today or tomorrow, it's going to continue year after year, the cost, you know, because nobody wants to hold the school's feet to the fire and say, "You're spending too much, your cost is too much." The responsibility and the, the actions of this council is a lot more effective at spending money and, and holding the purse strings tight than, than anybody else. And I don't, I don't think that we go about spending money unwisely, and I don't think we do it without careful consideration and deliberation. And I think that that's, I think that's, that's well-known, you just have to look at how, how we've done it. When the pandemic came, we, Finance Committee was tasked with how we wanted to proceed, and I've said, "I don't think we should spend a nickel more than we spent last year, because it's an unknown," and we all held to that. And I think that's, that's representative of what a responsible council does to protect their taxpayers. There's never going to be a good time for this, Shirley. You know, we can, we can put this thing aside and say, next year, next month, ten years from now, we don't have any other land. There's nobody sitting out there that's going to offer us ten, fifteen acres to, to build a housing project. This is, this is a, an opportunity for us to, to do something. Got, every, everything says that it may not succeed, there is a lot of steps in the path here that, that speak failure, and frankly, you know, having a March vote, to me, speaks failure. But I think that, you know, we've committed to ourselves to a course of action here, we've committed ourselves to hearing what the public has to say, we've got important things to do, and frankly, let's get on with it.
Yes, Counselor.
I just want to thank you guys for answering my, the initial question I asked about why the difference in date. Mike called me a couple of months ago and said, "Would you support this going to referendum?" I gave my word, I, I would, I'm going to vote yes tonight. I did, was interested in that. Tig, going back to what you brought up, I, I think you're spot on, we need to look at different ways to support providing more building opportunities in this town. You know, we've, we've got a friend of ours that, Bob and Ron, Shirley and I went to school with, lives off Greeley Road, he's got the frontage, but because of the zoning, he can't build a house there. And we have been trying and trying and trying to find a way to let him build a house, sell his existing and build there. That, to me, looking in the clustered area up here in the center, is a way that we can allow more stuff, and I look forward to working with you and everybody else, and looking at those possibilities in the future, so, that's all I have.
So one other thing, and Ms. Doughton, you may be able to confirm this, but I think in twenty-twenty, which I know is a little bit skewed, but the last March referendum vote, we had a forty-five percent turnout, voter turnout. And then in June of twenty, June of twenty-one, and June of twenty-two, we had a twenty-seven percent turnout, twenty-four percent turnout, and twenty-two percent turnout, respectively. So I understand the COVID, the COVID issue during March may have affected that in terms of folks maybe all voting absentee all of a sudden from their living rooms.
No, because COVID didn't shut us down till Friday the thirteenth.
Okay, well then, that even proves this more, that March actually may be, again, based on that data, a better time to hold this, if you want a larger turnout and larger voices to opine on what they want to happen here. Well, we shall see, but the Junes for the, for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty-two, were all in the twenty percent range. And so it's just a call to everyone in the community that if this moves forward, if this is put on the ballot this evening, that you have a right to vote, and you have a civic duty to vote, and I would encourage everyone to come to all of the meetings, learn more, and to vote.
When you're ready, I'll make a motion.
I'll accept it.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, I move to schedule an advisory referendum election on March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to vote on the following question. Shall the town council accept the proposal from Westbrook Development Corporation dated November second, two thousand and twenty-three, and subsequent site plans, proposals for the development of one oh, one hundred and seven affordable housing units to be constructed on town-owned property located off Drown Road, adjacent to Town Hall?
Did you already pre-second then?
Yes, sorry, I second.
So.
I'm a newbie.
You didn't know what he was going to, you didn't know what he was going to say, so. So we have a motion, and we have a second? Any other discussion on those motions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, we have six in favor.
I'm holding out for June first, just because I like the school information, but.
So is that an abstention, or is that a vote against the motion before us today?
Six of one, half dozen of the other, no.
Okay, so we have six in favor, one opposed. Thank you very much to everyone who commented, and for all of the input that you've brought to this decision. We're moving next to the next item on the agenda, which is twenty-four dash zero zero two, to authorize the town manager to enter into a three-year contract with Flashvote. Mr. Manager, oh.
I'm going to defer to our Communications Director, Whitney Miller. As you know, you were a part of a workshop earlier this evening, Whitney has some additional information that she'd like to share, we didn't get a lot, a chance to participate in the things that we would see our community going in, but Whitney might be able to share with.
Great, please.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we have a, sorry, Whitney Miller, the Communications Director for the town, I just want to make sure that we have a really clear idea, so I met this organization back in September, and we've talked to them a few times since then, and essentially what they do is really put out kind of pulse surveys to communities to try to help leaders and administration understand the community feelings on different things. I know that was kind of, it was a lot of information thrown in the workshop earlier, but essentially, it's very hard, and they talk about it a lot in our communications conferences and trainings, that it's really hard to kind of get a good census of where people are at and how people actually feel throughout the town, because we have, you know, eighty-five hundred-plus people in town. Not everybody's on social media, not everybody comments that way, people are involved in different areas, so this is something that Bill and I have looked at to really try to get a better idea of how people are feeling in town. I'm going to.
Whitney, just one second, for the gentleman speaking in the back, if you don't mind carrying a conversation out in the hallway, I'd appreciate that, so we can hear the presentation. Thank you. Go ahead, Whitney.
So this is kind of the curve here, really, you get, you hear from people on each issue that really dislike an issue or really love an issue, and you kind of, you don't hear from everybody else that's in the center. I'm, I'm not even going to go into all the specifics, but we can certainly get the answers from Flashvote if you'd like to, on, they handle all the kind of scientifically and statistically valid data, that aspect of it, and they help us with all of this, but what we're trying to get really is all of the people in the middle here, and not just the people who feel very strongly opposed or very strongly for any one thing. We want to hear the general consensus from everyone. So what Flashvote does is put out a quick, small survey, the surveys are a minute long, and gives residents of forty-eight hours to complete that. So you'll get a text or an email, it all depends on how you sign up for it, and have twenty-four hours to complete that, then you'll get a reminder if you haven't done it, and you have another twenty-four hours to complete that. Afterwards, the results come back to us and to everyone who has completed the survey, so we're all getting the same results, which is really important. So how it works for us is essentially. So, how it works for us is essentially, we help residents sign up. I'm just gonna kind of click through quickly for you. And we ask them, you know, essentially, do you have one minute a month to help make your government work more smoothly? Help make your government work better. We know that people don't have a ton of time. People are scrolling through social media, you know, while they're making dinner or something and they're trying to catch up on what's happening around them. Not everybody can make it to these meetings and learn all the things that we're talking about. But they still have an opinion that we need to hear. So, this gives them the opportunity to sign up, not on any one item. It's not, do you really care about trash? Do you really care about housing? Do any of those? It's just in general, do you care about trying to help your government work better? So, we sent out the invites for them. Flashvote essentially helps us with all of this. They have invitations and kind of marketing that they can help us with to get it out to everybody. We are really fortunate. We send the crier out every single week. It goes out to four thousand residents and twenty-eight hundred open it. So, we have twenty-eight hundred people in this town that open all of our communications on a weekly basis. I have no reason to believe that even ten percent of them might not sign up for something like this. And that gives us a really good pool. Then Flashvote will look at that and make sure that demographically, we're hitting everybody that we need to hit. In my opinion, the best part of that is that this is a third party doing it. Maintains anonymity for all of our residents. They have the expertise that we don't have in-house here to make sure that everything is scientifically valid. So, once the invite goes out, I would work with them to make sure that we have the pool that we need to have. We would continue to push it for a period of time until we have what we need. And then it would stay open for people to sign up anytime they'd like to. They sign up with their demographic information. Again, that's anonymous for us. I won't have that information. The only thing that I could potentially have is, you know, did, is that, does someone live locally? Does someone live in the town who answered it? And I may see that there's people that live in the surrounding area that answer some of the questions and we can filter through that if we need to for a particular item. So, the next thing is that we would pick the topics. Flashvote has, and they didn't get to it in the workshop, but they have done hundreds of surveys for other municipalities. So, if I go to them and say, we're working on a comprehensive plan, what have you done for questions for that? And they're going to come back and say, these are some questions that we've done. What are the issues you guys are looking at? And they're going to help us come up with the unbiased questions. Which again, those questions shouldn't come from me, they shouldn't come from the town manager. They should come from an unbiased third-party source. So, they would help us do that, that's, that would be the part of their job. So, again, they're working on the questions and they're helping us make those questions in a way that people understand. We understand that this is our job every single day. My understanding of what's happening in this building is different than my neighbors. They don't know what I do every single day and their expertise is something else that I don't understand. So, we're trying to kind of meet people in the middle and ask them questions that make sense, that they can answer for us, that give us an idea. And sometimes those questions might be, how much do you understand about X issue? So that we know what we need to explain better for people. So, again, this is kind of showing that they're in between us and the residents. But also that there's different ways that residents can sign up to do this. It's email, text, voice, if we need to have phone calls made. We could certainly work with our active living director or somebody to make sure that we have a laptop available if people want to come in and fill out the surveys in that forty-eight hour time period, but they don't have access to it at home. And then we report the results. So, they, again, they report the results. They're going to give the results to me, they're going to give the results to everyone who has taken the survey. So, we can all see what that's saying. And then, of course, we can provide it, myself, the town manager can provide it to you guys to help make decisions or at least give you an idea of where town sentiment sits on something as you're working through it. Because, again, not everybody has the time to come here on a Monday night or shoot out an email on a topic. So, I won't go too, too far into it, but essentially, these are kind of what the results look like. There's all kinds of different ways that we can filter through all of that. Filters are easy for analysis. You know, we can kind of go through all of that, but to be conscious of your time and how late it is already. Does anybody have specific questions that I can answer for you?
Whitney, let me just jump in quick before you. If Bob and Shirley in particular, and, and Mark to some degree, we worked with Brian Roberts. He was a doctor in statistics, the guy was brilliant. And he worked months with us on the comprehensive plan survey. What I liken this to is kind of what he helped us with, with the community survey. Last time, we went to Brian and said, hey, can you help us with this? Can you make it relevant? And how do you balance it? So, we're getting representation across all panels. Tonight, we had a half an hour and it was Zoom. And it's always awkward because you think of questions, you're not sure if you get the right answer. But both of us saw this at our professional conferences this year and both of us clicked immediately to our upcoming comprehensive plan. And a tool for the council in addition to that committee. But Shirley, you remember how long it took us agonizing over that question on survey? And Brian would be there to correct us and say, no, that's too biased, you can't say that. It slanted too much in one way. And then when he got the data, he basically divided it through all our community, entire community area, which was truly, truly helpful when we were going forward to just see that we had representation across the town. We had thirty-eight percent of our community fill out that, you know, big, big, big survey. It was over a hundred and twenty questions, I believe. So, when I look at the data and I see what they're providing to us, I'm saying, this is a tool for not just the comp plan, but for a lot of relevant items. We're not going to try to squeeze this in for this project we're dealing with on March fifth. But for the future, those types of surveys might be enormously helpful to future councils and even planning boards or even town staff. So, I'm excited about it. This isn't urgency that it has to happen tonight. If you want to bring them back in here or if you want us to get more information, I'm okay with that. But I also wanted to give you the opportunity to hear it and essentially hear how excited both Whitney and I are of what a great tool this could be for, for you as a body as well as the rest of the committees that serve the council.
While I was, while we were doing the Zoom thing, that was my immediate thought too. What a great tool for the comprehensive plan. And so, and so I asked Tig while, while we were breaking up, taking a break there, I said, so.
Broke it up? Don't break up with people.
Linda, turn the TV off.
So, it seems like it's a, you know, over a three-year period, it's not a great cost. But how do we, is there a way that we can ask too much of them and then it becomes, and the charges increase? In other words, this doesn't sound to me like it's an unlimited, oh, do whatever you want. There must be some parameters.
You can address that.
I didn't understand how that works.
Yeah, so they have told us that on average municipalities do five to six a year. Bill and I kind of asked that same question, but how many can we do if we're excited about it? And they really didn't give us a limit. I think that realistically, we want people to stay interested in doing it. So, we can't be sending them out every other week because people will stop participating. But if we, especially during a comp plan period, if we wanted to be sending them out on a monthly basis, Flashvote isn't going to tell us no. That's, that's part of the plan. But they have said on average, people do about five or six a year.
Bob going right along, falling right, with Bob said, Whitney, I think is, is a good company. I'm supportive of it. I just wonder if right now is not the right time. We don't have any hot, but we have, what we just voted on is hot, but we don't have any real thing. But I think six months, a year from now, we may have a bunch of stuff that we, we what I don't want to do is start too early to get them on because we got, it's a three-year expiration. But if we got stuff coming up, bring them back. I'd rather start then and then our three-year period starts. But I, I just don't. Tonight, tonight, I'm just, I'm not ready to spend eight thousand bucks.
Absolutely. And I totally respect that, whatever you guys would like to do. I will just say, if we are thinking that, you know, a comp plan or something is going to start down the road, we do want to start early enough that we have a pool of people that are willing to take it. So, you know, if we're talking a comp plan, we should probably look at starting something like this six months or more in advance to make sure we have a pool of people that are interested and will, will work with us through it.
Whitney, you're spot on on this thing. I'm glad you brought it up tonight. So, don't walk out of here and think, I'm not supportive. And it's nice having a, a communications director thinking ahead, which is one of your great attributes. But tonight, I'm just, I think we, we need to wait a little bit.
Our last comp plan committee was twenty-five people. And there was a lot of interest in it. And there might not be, you know, five hundred people that want to answer questions from us, you know, five to six times a week. But there might be twelve hundred people who want to say in the comp, who want to say in the comp plan. So, is, do we have that flexibility to narrow it or broaden it or narrow it and broaden it depending on?
Yeah, and we can, we could really play with it however we'd like to. We can have questions that just go out to people that live within town. We can also have the questions go out to everybody and then filter and just look at the results from the people that lived in town.
Why would we go out of town?
Some people, so it's, if there are people that live like right in Falmouth or right around and they happen to get the criers and they can still sign up. When they put in their address, they will be kind of pushed out of it whenever we put things in local only. Like he was showing a little in the workshop. We can click on local only and just see the people that live within Cumberland. But if we had something that was transit or something that was going through multiple towns and we just wanted to see what other results were, we could certainly broaden that scope.
I, I think I want to be careful to, to let the council know that when you budget and prepare for the next comp plan, which will probably happen within the next three to six months, this doesn't replace that survey that we have to do.
That was my question.
It can't, it absolutely can't. What I see Shirley and Bob in particular, where you guys have been on multiple comp plans, is that the comp plan will, committee will have a tool that can send out some questions that they're wrestling with and saying, wow, does this make sense? Remember when we had that interim committee that dealt with one acre and three acre zoning? And do we change this? And we, I mean, we went back and forth for almost two years. I think if we had sent out something like this to the community, we would have seen that, you know, the majority of communities support leaving the zoning as it is. And that's kind of, you know, where, where I think this becomes a huge tool for us in that it's a quicker return than, you know, three committees later and we're still dealing with the same questions. So, don't, please don't think this replaces that comp plan survey. It does not, it supplements it. So, and other issues that the council will be dealing with.
Yeah, two things. One, I really liked this, especially when he was kind of talking through the anecdotal data versus kind of the true data. I'm not on social media, I probably should be, but I don't, I'm not.
Good for you, Tig.
And so.
Those millennials.
No, but I thi, I think that a lot, I think that there's things that I would really just like to know. And I also wonder like, okay, we're, we're going to have a new, new trash this year, right? So, how, how is it working? You know, how is the, you know, we don't have a trash collector anymore. It's, or we still have trash collectors, but it's automated. So, how is that working? Are the new bins the right size for you? I mean, I think there would be great ways to kind of get these data points and understand because we're, we might hear a lot of that anecdotal data from people who are calling in or maybe people are writing on Facebook. But it would be good to get a true representation. And I think to the other point, maybe Bailey, this is where you were going, I'm not a mind reader, but building up that base of users so that we're actually getting a solid mass of people or solid statistical, oh my God, the N, what is it, statistical sampling? Yes, thank you, sorry. I think would be good to kind of start doing that proactively. And also, new tools, it's, there's going to be a little bit of a learning curve, right? And so, we want to make sure that if we're rolling it out as a supplemental tool to the comprehensive plan, we know how it works, we know what it's capable of. If there are blind spots that we need to be aware of, we're doing that on, you know, not that trash collection isn't the most important thing in the world, but if you're looking at a ten-year comprehensive plan, you want to make sure that your data points are really, really right.
So, Whitney, I have a question for you. In terms of building up that initial panel, what, what do we need in terms of timeline and runway to build that up? Like, do you need two months to build that, three months, like to build up, like the, the user base that we would have?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty confident that we can do it a little faster than that. Cassidy that I've worked with primarily at Flashvote is really confident that the number of people that we have open our weekly newsletter is a really good indication of how checked in a lot of people are. I mean, they're giving it at least a couple of minutes every single week to open that up and kind of scroll through and see what's happening in town. So, this could be the top of the crier for a couple of weeks and we might see enough people that they would consider that a statistically valid pool of people. I would love to see more than a hundred or two hundred and I think we could get that. But they are, you know, their thoughts were really, just a couple of weeks is probably all we would really need. I would try to be a little more conservative and say it might take a little longer, but really, I think, I think we could.
Like a month or so, maybe?
Maybe.
So, that's what I'm wondering, like, it sounds like the general interest in this topic, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we talk about businesses, I think about in my home, like I say something and two seconds later, it's in my search bar. It's a little creepy, right? But you, you know, it's being marketed to you already. Sometimes I click on it and I say, ah, that's exactly what I was thinking about, right? So, it's, it's brilliant in what it's trying to do. Governments have traditionally not maybe done that. And so, to me, I'm not saying we need to go to that level, but this is such, in my opinion, a great way to check in with a larger base of folks than maybe have time to come in on a Monday night or to send us an email. So, it makes a lot of sense. But to Mike's point, I think just after what we've just gone through, maybe a little palate cleanser might be needed to kind of just think about what the next steps might be. And I think we also talked about not trying to use something like this on a big-ticket item that we're talking about now, like just keeping that separate because.
It's the runway we want to also build. So, if we talk about this through the budget process and we bring it back in later on after we've had a couple more conversations, even if we bring it back to you in May, that's fine too. And I just want Whitney to have enough time to kind of get the training that she will need as well to get up to speed. And what they do initially and what they didn't really explain as well as they did at the conferences is there's a lot of softball questions that go out in the early days just to get people engaged and get, to get people checking it in, opening the emails so that they participate. And once they're kind of hooked, they're saying, all right, I get this, it's an easy process. And I think that's the part that we want to build that runway. So, we can come back to it this spring.
Sure, well, Councilor. I just have a comment. Whitney, I know you're extremely busy now, but if we were to adopt this program, would this free you up a little bit so you could probably put on another hat out front? And don't hate me for this. I, I mean, I just, I know you're busy now and I know you're overloaded. Is this going to create more work for you or is it going to make your job easier?
I don't think it necessarily creates more work. I would definitely lean on them and their expertise because I'm not a statistician. I don't know necessarily how to go through all of this data. But I think it would be helpful for me in knowing what do residents not know? What are we not getting out there enough? I think that part of it would make me more efficient at my job to be able to say, you know, this, this, and this are things residents really need more information on because they don't know anything about it. It could, in that way, I think it would be really helpful to me.
You are quite efficient now, but we'll see your old front in six months.
Tig, as I would refer to this as downstream efficiencies. I just have to say, I'm in a massive supporter of this. I don't think we should be waiting to hear what people think until big-ticket items come up. I think it's important to have a pulse on what's going on tomorrow and today and every day. And the other thing is, I think there's probably some initial sticker shock, but as someone who buys software fairly frequently in my business that I'm in, this is actually very affordable. And also, we're probably only going to pay a portion of it in this fiscal year. So, I think it would be in our best interest to purchase it now and have that locked-in price, knowing that if we continue to wait, it's just going to be more, so.
Well, to that point, and you may be raising the same, like, part of the budget discussions, which would be in February.
End of February.
End of February, okay. Councilor King, you had your hand up first, I think, sir.
So, I think it's a, I, I'm intrigued. I'm definitely intrigued. A couple of things have come up as discussion items that caused me pause just a little bit. I was thinking of the trash, like, we should not be out there asking questions we're not going to be able to fix. Like, do you like trash? Do you like the trash? And, well, no, I hate it, it's awful. awful. I can't lift the bucket into my truck. I can't, you know?
It was the first thing that came to my mind, justice.
I know. So, and I think that they would help with that.
Yeah.
My concern goes back to kind of this, and I agree with you in, in large measure, Bailey, but we are representatives of the people. We are the legislative body. And there is some perception out there amongst some people in certain demographics that we're not listening. And I worry that having something like this would just further that anxiety about that.
How is that? Asking more questions and learning more about what they want?
Because you're going to leave, you may leave some people out, like, like the 22% who are over 65 that might not be on the computer, the 3% who don't own a computer, the 6% who don't have internet, or, or, you might have, there, there is some concern about bias when you use these kind of tools, technology bias, underlying technology bias, people who are friendly, have a friendlier experience with it. I'll probably, in the long run, support it, but I do think it should be part of the budget process.
Counsel Cal, did you have something else?
I just wondered if we should table this and ask them how long they might warrant their price. I mean, if it's good to the end of the year. I mean.
I think so.
I think Bailey's.
I think they understand governments and we're in the middle of a fiscal year, too. So we can ask.
Obviously Bailey knows a lot more about this than the rest of us do. And I mean, and I think from what they described, I think that they, it's, it's a very useful tool.
Yeah. I would also wonder if, and this is, I don't, don't get mad at me, Bill, for saying this, but if there's an opportunity to do some cost sharing with the school board to also keep a pulse on what's going on with them. But I don't know if that's crossing the line. Ted's laughing at me.
I've seen a couple smiles.
I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm watching a lot of people's faces.
I'm sorry. I'm always all about cost sharing. How can I get someone else to pay for it?
You'd be better ask Ash in Falmouth.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Just to kind of see where we are.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I support, but I move to table.
Wait. I think, I think you have a president with a question.
Oh, yeah.
About comment.
Yeah. Do you mind pausing just for one second?
Absolutely not.
Sorry, it was starting off so well, too. Please, if we have any public comment on this. Yes. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Arnold Klugman, Bradbury Way. Just a couple of comments. I've dealt with polling systems in a past life. They're great. The biggest issue is when you get the response you don't want. And making sure you make people aware of that. The other thing is guaranteed anonymity by contract, not by words, by contract, that you, as the town council, can never find out who voted. The additional item that I would suggest is you need to put in a person and a system for those that are not technologically savvy. We have a lot of them. And why a three-year contract? Try it for a year. Just a thought process.
It was, it was to avoid a $3,500 setup fee if it was a one-year deal. That's why.
You go with that and you say, I'll amortize it over the next three, two years if it pays off. You show me a software company that doesn't negotiate.
Great. Those are great comments. Thank you. Anyone else from the public have a comment on this before? I believe Counsel Eads is going to make a motion. Seeing none? I would accept a motion.
Go back to how I started. I support, but I move to table item 24-002.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to table, which I understand now, after doing this long enough, that that means no further discussion on the topic. So I would call for a vote. All those in favor to table. Looks like we have one, two, three, four, five. Two, all those opposed? One in opposition and one abstention, it appeared?
I voted with the.
In favor?
Yes.
Oh, I did not see your arm up. Okay, so it looks like we have six in favor, one opposed. Okay, so that has now been.
I'd like to see this back for a.
Workshop?
Reconsideration in budget season.
So moving to the last item on the agenda tonight is 24-003, to appoint members to boards and committees. I don't know. Oh, yeah, please. Counsel Cal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Sally Pearce and Amanda Vigu to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Sean Alfred and Peter Gasso to the Board of Assessment and Review, Robert Johnson and Mike Schwent to the Coastal Waters Commission, Cara Biddings to the Cumberland Housing Authority, Riva Crutt and David Young to the Lands and Conservation Commission, Linda Putnam to the Forestry Subcommittee, Stephen Fitzgerald to the Trail Subcommittee, Riva Crunt to the Sustainability Subcommittee, Peter Bingham and Lorraine Redden to the Planning Board, James Clifford to the Personal Appeals Board, Linda Draper and Eli Rivers to the Prince Memorial Library Advisory Board, Bill Hanson and Sally Pearce to the Recreation Committee Education Advisory Board, Peter Gasso, Ralph Olton, and Paul Skoloff to the Shellfish Conservation Commission. And these are all reappointments.
Okay, so we have a motion. I believe we have a second. Any discussion on those motions?
Can we talk about Mike Schwent?
Sure.
Have a discussion on him.
In front of his back.
Yeah.
I would just like to add, Brenda will be sending out an announcement for other vacancies on the various boards. I know we have one on library advisory coming up. And for the public who's interested in being on a board or committee, those applications are available online if you just feel like volunteering. But she'll be more specific after tonight.
And also, just, I think it can't be said enough, just thank you from the town, from the council, from everyone in our community for all of the kind of unsung heroes who are making all these subcommittees and these committees work, that bubble themselves up to the council for us to have informed decisions and move things forward. So it's, it's very much appreciated for all those folks who are not only first-time applicants to join a committee or a subcommittee, but also all of those who are being reappointed. I see those names year after year. And so it's just a really wonderful thing that we have and we're very fortunate to have. So we have a motion. We have a second. I would say all those in favor. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One quick thing before we lose John Gensenius.
Sure.
A man of many talents. He also has been working with Chris Bolduc during the snowstorm. John gave us a very detailed response, a detailed report on the storm, which is extremely helpful for us and our crews when heavier bands would be coming through, when we, you know, we should be looking at different, different action items for our plow crews. So, John, I really, really appreciate that. I just saw that and I didn't want you to leave before I said thank you. Not only the trail master, the snow master and the Johnny Lightning himself. So really appreciate that. And I just wanted the council to know. And also, I just wanted to extend a huge thank you to the Public Works crew. This was a, this was a long storm. They did a great job. And I think we have the best crew in the state of Maine or all of New England. They're just amazing. So I want to thank the guys for really putting a real long day in and doing such a great job.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, that concludes legislation and policy. We now move to new business. I will start at my left. Counsel Cal.
I'll donate my $20 to the food pantry. Very worthy cause. A lot of people enjoyed what we did for them this season, thanks to the manager and his lovely wife who bends over backwards to help the people in this community. It's much appreciated. Just one thing that I've noticed, I was out for the last 36 hours as well as Public Works, too. And what's coming down the road with our trash, and I know what's coming, if anybody rode through Falmouth after the snowplows cleaned out all the trash cans, it was unbelievable.
Really?
I mean, it was a bomb site. It seemed, I had to go to Wyndham a couple of times. I go through Falmouth to get to Wyndham. I went to Portland a couple of times. And I think we got to do something different when there's a projected snowstorm. And I don't know the answer, but there is trash everywhere in the town of Falmouth.
It's early cancellation. It's just bad communication. And that's why Whitney does what she does.
Yeah.
You know, every, we get those announcements out as quick as we get them from our trash haulers. So I was shocked.
So was I. I said, this is what we have to look forward to. But it was disastrous. And I mean, and I think you can't blame the people because a lot of them have 500-foot driveways and they have to take it to the end of the driveway and leave it there. You know, it's not like they could say, hey, the storm's coming. Do I leave it out or do I bring it in? You know, I mean, so.
But why was all that trash out? That's what I couldn't understand.
I couldn't imagine either.
From Monday or, because it was Sunday. I just, I couldn't get, I didn't understand that at all.
But, and that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Counsel Will.
I spoke with Mark the other day. And anyways, I said, you know, we have, we have challenges in front of us. We also have opportunities. And so, you know, I'm, I'm going to sound a little off key here, but we've had a number of people that have passed away recently. And we always hear about, well, they spent their last time at the Gosnell House in Scarborough. And we don't have a hospice facility here in the town of Cumberland. And I don't know much about hospice care or hospice facilities, but I, I think that, I think there's an opportunity coming for us. There's a piece of property that's going to change hands soon. And so I wonder if maybe we might be able to have somebody who has some experience in hospice facility, maybe make a five-minute presentation to us. I want continuum of care, you know, not just affordable housing, but, you know, the next thing is senior assisted living, nursing care, and then finally hospice care. But anyways, that's, that's what I have tonight.
You're not that old.
Thank you. We have an opportunity in front of us. And, yeah. But thank you, Bob. It's very important stuff. Counsel Philson.
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Douglas.
Just a reminder that we have posted the town manager's job. It's a sad day.
Finally.
We look forward to the process and meeting all the candidates in the, in the coming months. Yeah. Exciting times, but a lot of, a lot of change ahead. A lot of change ahead. So.
Just a couple of quick things, by the way, if anybody's looking for a Stanley Cup.
It's mine.
I know. We got one. Bill, great job with the town crew. I happened to drive from one end of the town to the other yesterday, twice during the storm. And those guys are top-notch. What they did, they, they're just, they're on top of it. The super, super crew. My condolences to the Story family and the loss of Charles Story. He was a guy that did a lot for this community and never billed plumbing. I mean, he fixed countless repairs down the school. I remember when I was running, I was running for sheriff in 2014. I was getting signatures and I had to get signatures from Democrats. So Falmouth wasn't any problem. And I got to the Falmouth-Cumberland line on Middle Road. And I drove, and I drove, and I drove, and no Democrats, till I got to your Uncle Charles. So I went in and he signed my petition to run. And we shot the bull. I think, I, I lost a lot of time in this house. Very nice. And you guys did a, you guys did him well in that funeral. So he's a, he's a good man, Shirley. And that's all I have.
We're going to miss him. He was so generous.
Yep.
So generous, not just with his time, but with his resources. He was a person, and I'm not supposed to know this or probably publicize it, but he would get the senior circuit breaker and then he'd give back to the food pantry. That's just, you know, he got to spend his money the way he wanted. Interestingly, one of the only things he and his wife disagreed vehemently on was how much time he spent watching Fox News.
As a Democrat?
Yes. So, let's not make assumptions about people's politics too quickly.
And he was a phenomenal basketball player when he was in high school, I was told.
He was. If you read, if you got to read the, the online obituary, he was the first story to be on a state championship basketball team. And there were many to follow. In fact, at one point, my sister said, there had never been a Greeley state title team without a story on it.
My father said he was unbelievable in high school. So, yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to keep it lean. I have about nine meetings left and I'm trying to tidy up some business. And one of those items of business is having a conversation with the school board about cost sharing. So I wrote a memo to Mark and a copy for all of you that says I'd like us to, it's an official request to start a conversation with them. And I provided some details about some of the districts that do, a lot of districts that are SAUs like ours or MSADs, they do 50% value, 50% pupil headcount. Interestingly, the consolidated school districts, almost all, six out of eight of them, do just per pupil. It's pretty interesting. But they tend to be like Booth Bay, Mount Desert Island, those kind of where they have to share. So that's, and please let me do, let me know what I can do to move this along.
Sure.
I thought we were going to try to talk about it at our last combined meeting and then tragedy hit. So take one and pass it on.
Would you also be sharing this via email or just?
Do you mind sending us an email with that as well?
I will send it as well.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Our cost sharing arrangement with North Yarmouth has not changed in 55 years, since 1968. And it was okay for a long time. The manager has shared with us reports before. For a long time, valuation and population were pretty close. But right now, we are paying 71% of the local share for 68% of the pupils. And when we are looking at perhaps a local financing of a brand-new school, those are significant dollars for our taxpayers. And that's, I think, all I have for tonight.
Thank you, of course, Counsel. Yes.
I'm sorry. I meant to bring this up. I stopped my Rise Pizza the other day and just talking to them about the business and so on. By town ordinance, they are required to shut down at 9:00 at night, even on a weekend. And I'd like to send to the ordinance committee for consideration, allowing businesses to stay open a little bit later, especially, as he told me, Friday, Saturday night, when the football game, basketball games going, they're playing till 9:00 plus.
Yep.
And while everybody's driving home, and a lot of parents haven't been there, they haven't eaten, he's shutting his doors at 9:00.
Great plan.
Yep.
So if, with your permission, I'd like to bring it to the ordinance committee for discussion, then bring it back to the council.
Yep. I think that sounds reasonable. Discussion's always good.
Okay, thank you.
We need an ordinance meeting soon.
And to close the loop here, Counsel Story King, thank you for putting this together. I appreciate it. That's a lot of research.
Is that all restaurants, Mike? Do you know? Or is it?
Cumberland House and Food Stop.
All at 9:00?
Is that only for sit-in, eat-in dining?
On Main Street.
On Main Street.
Village Center District.
Okay.
Even he said an hour would help, let alone two. But.
I mean, Jay Brothers is open till 10:00, so that's why I was asking if it's, but Main Street makes, but.
Is it all those guys are piling out, Ronnie, and they're not?
No, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I mean, I, what's, what difference is one hour going to make? I mean.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
One of the questions I was going to ask the vote people was, how are you better than Survey Monkey? Because Brunswick is hiring a new town manager as well. theirs is retiring it on January 31st. And they sent out a Survey Monkey to the residents asking what they were looking for in a new town manager. And it's closed already, so I couldn't get in and see what the questions were. But I was, that's just kind of a tweaky little question I had for.
Whitney, did you want to quickly respond to that, if you know the answer?
They were looking for Bill Shane.
I know what the answer is. They'll, they'll crank the data, not us.
Yeah, that's the biggest difference, is that they'll take care of all the data and giving the results, but also because Flashvote is using a statistical, thank you for, they're using a statistically correct demographic. They're, they have the whole pool. Sorry. My brain is really tired at this point. But they have the pool. Survey Monkey, we just send out and we hope that the right people are answering.
Right.
Because we def, we have used that for things in the past. But, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Anything else from my colleagues here? Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Anything else from my colleagues here before we close this out? I think the, the only new business I have is not really new business, but just to remind folks that we do have these community meetings where they're gonna be very different in terms of their feel. And there's not gonna be all of us sitting up here on a dais and all of the public sitting out. We're gonna hopefully be all sitting together, working through a lot of these complex questions together, sharing a lot of information. Those are going to be, just as a reminder, on January 18th, February 1st, and February 29th, which is a leap year. So we do have a 29th this year at Valhalla. So you can register for those online. Exactly where would that be again? Just on the town's website?
Right on the front.
Right on the front of the website. You can sign up to register. And also, if you have questions, you can put those in in advance so we can try to be prepared to answer some of those. Thank you to everyone on Town Staff, to the Town Council for working through a very complex process. I talked to the town manager and I said, you know, if, if this vote moves forward, this is now effectively out of our hands and into the public. And so it's been a very long road to get to this point. And so thank you, everyone, for, for all of your hard work and.
Chip fall where they may.
They will fall where they may. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That was fast.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.